Dr. Clifford both told me there at that legislative breakfast. I need to come over there every day and check that wall to make sure my picture is still up there. To make sure I'm still glowing.
Then they're not gonna have apple before I light it on fire.
Chamber of Breakfast is a week in tomorrow?
Yes, correct.
I don't need anything.
You don't want it in there? Okay, yes, sir. Let me get you heated a little.
No, I don't need anything.
You don't want any dessert at all? Oh, okay.
He's on a diet. Always on a diet. Usually seafood diet.
Well, it's caramel and apple. So, okay.
Now, did you burn mine or something?
I heated it because everybody else has lit on fire.
Why is it on fire?
Because I put brandy in it, which is why I gave you yours first. I know you don't like that.
Mine doesn't have brandy in it?
No, sir. That's why I gave it to you.
Thank you.
So you would know I didn't spike it.
We're test driving it here because we're having the president's meeting here in June.
Okay.
With a twist now.
And we're learning from today.
Yes. It's a good thing I work at a college. I'm learning.
All about learning.
That's right.
I think we ought to put that to a vote if I have alcohol on in campus anyway. If it gets voted down, I just think we need to vote on it again.
About whether to, about whether to have it.
Yeah, we're all drunk pretty heavily smart.
Whoa, forgot I know.
Good, how are you guys? Hello, hello.
You going back to me?
Did you have a rain gauge out there today at all? Did you see how much we ended up with there?
Mine was sixty and above, but a lot of the guys this morning were saying they had seventy and seventy-five.
Really?
Nice rain.
Yeah, it was.
Two things you never turn down. You don't have to cap for a half inch of rain. Especially when it's so much better.
Yeah, price is going the right way now, too.
Yep. I'm not sure what's causing that cattle crisis really going up.
Yeah, we form both of them.
A lot of uncertainty facing us, I think. You know, when I was telling you, talking about, David Webb, they were talking about a lot of these politicians, there's a real big push right now for more tech schools in all of them. Not just, I mean, all over the country.
Right.
Because they're all having the same problem, getting qualified laborers and getting a certificate of, what do they call it, qualifications or something like that. Probably, if you can't find out anything about that
Yeah.
National Association of Home Builders and their programs that they have for community colleges. Don't know where to look. I'll bet you if you go to David Webb's website, you'll find something on it.
Well, you just look at, you look at where the, like I said, follow the money drug, but where the money's at right now, state, even the federal level. Institute, your sector, even the tech edge.
He drew some extra.
That's nice. This stuff is really good. You know, you're not terrible. You've worked for a while. How do I look?
You're not wearing any.
I'm not wearing any?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, it's always those with snacks for later. But me? How are you guys?
You've got a food map to save.
So did Sydney have all the fun after graduation?
Yeah, she's got a party Saturday. She give you an invitation?
No, well, I'm gonna be uptown. We're heading to Mexico, so.
I'm gonna tell her. Do you make plans to be uptown because you hear she's gonna have a party?
Yeah, that's it. And I'm, well, it's kind of a good thing because I have so many graduation parties going on Saturday. I was gonna upset somebody, so I'd rather upset everybody evenly than it be lopsided, I suppose.
She got a car. She traded cars.
Oh, did she?
I haven't seen it.
What are her plans? Yeah.
She wants to.
You're probably gonna like my practice.
Absolutely. Sales. I told her to fly over here and I don't know.
Know what she's looking for?
No, really. She could tell you. I can't do that.
Well, it's hard at that age to know until you try a couple of different things and see what fits.
But she didn't sell for quite a while and she's tired of that. She done well with her car and she wanted to get her lease and I had a schedule. And that made her a good deal, so she traded cars, I guess. Honda sports car or some kind, I don't know. She, I don't know.
I found that out.
So you're going to New Mexico?
Mexico.
Oh, Mexico. Yeah, Cancun, right.
Yeah, yeah, just outside. Same place me and Skeeter went in February. Now I'm taking my mother, my daughter, and my daughters' friend. I told the little girls, when Grandma goes to sleep, they say, you can't ditch me. And then Donna will be up at five in the morning, waking me up, ready to go have coffee, so, yeah. And I have to play both ends of this spectrum from the middle.
She's an early riser?
Yes.
That's a farm girl coming out of it. You know, when I was in the Bank of Ingles, that's where I met her. She was working, she worked hard time.
Yeah, I remember over there in Ingles. We always went over to the pool over there.
Oh, yeah?
And it was at the beauty shop there that I got my antiperspirant. They're in Ingles.
Was that your old renter's wife that did that?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you at this point in my life. That's. Hey, you're lucky I remembered to be here.
Behind the bank?
It seemed like it was just around the corner.
Yeah, I used to go there and get my haircut.
A Dodge? Oh, yeah. They're just a different district. Oh, yeah. Yeah. He retired during COVID.
Yeah.
And Joanna, she's lived there for about ten years. She started doing dishwasher. And now she's been calling some sessions to. I'm good with not. They put, you know, the partition glass, the, what do you call that? Plexiglass? They put it on all of their cafeteria tables.
Plexiglass on the table?
Yeah, so their tables, if they're round, they had like pie shape. That's what you're in a room.
Cubbies.
You literally actually have the cafe table, just like. I said, ooh, I said, I do not want to go to that. They're getting rid of that.
They did that, but then they got rid of the match.
Yes. And.
So the Plexiglass will protect you.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
So because I'm walking by, that's.
You're safe.
A neutral zone.
Yes. It's funny. Him and I went round and round yesterday for our meeting because.
You remember?
Yes. Because, you know, I, we've always followed the school and the health department. He said that we still have to require students to wear masks through the line. I said, no. I spoke with my president. They're going to mask appreciated. They're almost getting into the kids. If the kids want to learn, they can learn. And I'm not going to enforce that. You cannot ask me to enforce that. So they can go all over campus without a mask, but you're telling me they have to have it to come in here? They're not gonna come in here. I'm just like, bro, bro, this doesn't make sense. And every school is different. We're all in different colonies. We're in different states. I mean, how can you put one big general, okay, well, that wasn't helpful. Okay, well, that's not a great lesson for anyone. Yes. But he'll revisit it. No, I don't. I wasn't happy. So out of his nine directors yesterday, he goes, I want to show him. Tell me why you, just go out and about. How many of you don't wear your mask? Two of us. Two of us. Don't, like, I don't want my mask to let go off, you know? I'm here because I'm tired of my work. But I don't, if I'm not tired of it, I didn't do it. I don't, it's not my belief. There was more, but nobody wanted to raise their hand. Because James, my own son, I'm like, I know you don't want your mask anywhere. No. And then Mariah, well, somebody else threw the one in their closet, they whole entire staff has it. No, we don't want it. And besides that, we have managed and just done just well for the last year. I think we can manage, we just want for the next year, you know? Let people decide for themselves.
So he's not yielding to.
Yeah, he's yielding to us not having to require the students if our school doesn't require it. But he's not yielding to great western diet employees. Nothing. That's what I said too. I was like, our health department does not even require it for food service workers. It's, I don't understand why you need. You know, you. He's blind. He wishes personal beliefs on the company. He should not do that. And that's why I stood my ground because I don't believe in that. So are we doing Gin and Slashtes?
Caramel something. Flaming caramel apple. Modified.
This is the dessert we have on those presidents meeting here in June. So she wanted the.
You know, we just hate to be here, Ginni. It's an awful position. We just don't like it at all, do we?
I mean. Do you want us to go ahead and get it, Dan, before you go on camera?
Absolutely.
So I don't have to be on the camera?
I don't know.
Actually, you might far more worthy of.
Than us being on camera.
Oh, okay, I'll wait just to, just to, yeah. Yeah, do we want to shut the, you all okay shutting the lights out? Because it's a pretty blue slant. Okay, we'll turn them right back on.
Want to say happy birthday?
To you. I want to get you guys drunk.
Oh, I totally do. Sorry. It's my agenda.
It is a beautiful thing. No, it'll burn off. Lookie there, that one's pretty. We got one good red. Really, there's some more brandy. So I think we'll give that one to a wine.
Make sure we get to the.
There we go.
There we go.
Very cool.
It smells really good.
Steve, look, you're getting all those crackers. You're gonna have it down perfect.
I will practice more. And I will get the chocolate.
Looks smells fresh.
It's supposed to sit in a chocolate bowl. And today was a Monday because I have a chocolate world, so.
Young, thank you. That can be very temperamental.
Yes.
Caramel stuff.
Exactly. Carla down in her office, she. They're fine. You sit down and eat them and.
Enjoy.
And then Colin and Derek are in.
All right, okay.
Take away the moonlighting, your dessert, and you're great me, and both do ready, good, bad, instead of a meeting. Gosh, these thingy cards were in.
I'll fix this in the new water park online and where that was.
Looks good. And Skeeter's already asked if there was gonna be a beer garden halfway up. He's like. He's like, I'll never make it to the top of that without having a break. They need some kind of patio beer garden, snack bar or something halfway up that.
How's the elephant going?
Well, it was all green and pretty when we got back from West Side yesterday. I had some spots to sand off, get ready for the detailed painting and. Well, my guy burned too far through, so now we gotta go hit it again, yeah. Got a little heavy with the sander there.
Thank you all. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night. Thanks, Mary. Thanks, sir.
Hey, did you get your trays? I will. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you figure anything out on dates for fish feed?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Okay.
Is it in the morning?
If we moved it to the afternoon.
I'll check when, well, I don't know what time my race is.
Are you, oh.
Well, but I mean, if, if it, I wouldn't, oh.
You're gonna be racing on Saturday, right?
Saturday, I think Saturday morning, but I.
Where?
Dallas.
Oh, you can't make it after Saturday.
No, I know, but I was thinking about like, if I could.
Oh.
Should zoom in or call in? How long's the race? Maybe we just put you on your headset.
Right?
Get the GoPro going and.
Like, just a little window, just. You're bouncing a little bit there, buddy.
It might need more of a listening than participating meeting for you.
Once I know more details, I'll, if I can zoom in, I will.
It's only five days early.
Yeah, it's not that far till Monday.
No. It's Monday sometimes.
That wasn't gonna be my off dinner.
Because anybody else having trouble getting theirs cut up.
Yes. It's slippery. I think they need it.
Delete what? Cut down.
It's pretty strong. Look to the bottom.
I don't. Mine doesn't taste too much because they went back and added some to some of them trying to flame them up.
I know.
Re-flame yourself.
This one is.
Yeah. I don't have very much liquid.
I bet if we cut the apple completely, it'd be better.
Well, if they're supposed to put them in chocolate bowls, they're probably not so slippery.
Right.
In what her plan is as opposed to these.
We'll see who can't handle liquid.
But yeah, mine doesn't have near as much liquid in it. The bottom is blanked. It's. Oh, yeah, mine's.
Ben, let's, Colin, I thought that'd be good.
Uh, yes.
No, you're not at all. You bought one, correct?
Um, there's one back here.
I know. I'm just not paying attention.
I didn't walk around.
No, sir. I can't.
Mine, so like, I mean.
I thought when I had a conversation with Joyce.
I'll take the apple place with the lot of city.
Marilyn don't drink. She said it.
You just sit here like you normally do. Are you at the table?
Um, yeah, I'll probably come down.
Has nothing to do with the user. I don't know.
That they did some update, like we're starting to update because other people have problems too. There's the hero of the exercise world. It's like. How much of that thing weigh that you were carrying?
Oh, that one was, I think it was, I don't know. It was over a hundred pounds, a hundred and eighty pounds or something.
No way.
Yeah.
Wow. How far did it go?
Um, just around a course. I guess I got twenty seven miles. Thirty-two.
Get it right.
Make it sound good.
And why would a person want to do that?
Oh, you know.
Trying to rescue somebody.
Oh, jeez.
Simulating that you're rescuing somebody strong.
And then how much stayed away?
It was like a hundred and eighty, I think.
Did you carry it how long?
Um, only about, it was probably about thirty yards total. It wasn't that bad. Maybe go around maybe twenty yards or something. But.
Well, good for you. Did you have to, did you stop and rest?
No, I just kept on going, just going. One of those things, you just, you're really halfway through and just want a little bit more, you know?
Just get the momentum going. You stop, you may not get rolling.
Besides, it was, I mean, we don't accept that it's late. I said, break it too. Fine. Oh. We politician you.
Oh, yeah.
We'll have a little procurement conversation later. Just want you to win.
No. Oh, you mean you to that? Well, of course.
Well, he didn't pay attention to me. You did that.
Marilyn, I'll have a lot of things to do inside. Okay, so, don't, don't worry. Neither one of us can leave. Life is good. The spiney, I don't know if Johnson will be able to call or not. He's a butler doing something that Larry, this guy taught that. We'll be on a thing to fully pull it from the engine. Which I probably need to remind him. Well, the guy that bought, you know, John's retired, but he's, he's an attorney that isn't, he's a nice guy.
Actually, so. What's his name from Ken City? Terry Kill did the one Spartan in North Carolina.
Oh, really?
When we were up in Montana, he did the one in, in, yeah, North Carolina.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Of course. Is anyone not vaccinated here? Okay. They would put the batch. They would have the masks on, please. Yep. Sorry, Dave.
I gotta find one.
I'm gonna go in the back.
No, I'm just gonna go out here and find a rat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I put this in today.
Oh, no.
Okay.
She said hers was giving her fits.
Yes. I know. When you talk, you can plug one down. And I thought. Somebody said that they just got some from their meet today that I can.
It was actually.
But it's happened. They said not for within four weeks.
The banks is.
It might cause you less trouble. And of course, you go into Mexico right away.
Yeah, but I know.
Well, that's why I was gonna do it a couple of weeks. By so long, my daughter, because they had theirs had a lot less havoc. And of course, they were down in Colorado too. But because they had their vaccinations.
Yeah, we didn't have any trouble in February.
Okay, do you just add it with Colorado to the list now?
They removed it.
Oh, did they move?
Well, they moved the state and it's just certain counties.
Oh, good.
Michigan, what?
Oh, I heard.
Yes. True.
In the next year. We don't have any employees, maybe this after your convention.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you. I did earlier. That would be helpful to her, she said yes.
Which I'd all agree to.
Don't tell me. You'll send her a message.
Yeah, she's on there.
Are you one of her moved up to?
Uh, we can, please.
Who's first?
Uh, Taryn.
At least don't mill the files.
Or, yeah, finish Thursday. Thursday day and the faculty work. Great. Week off and then Sunday.
It's just been weird, like a weird rainy day.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's so weird because of when the weather's cold too, I, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, it's May, it's spring. And then I'm thinking, but I've been living in the winter.
Next week, ninety degrees. And on the beach.
Rub it in, rub it in.
Oh, I will. Thought if there's icicles on it. Your leaders. It'll be nice if that consistent, there's some spirits all over the gym. I pulled up the forecast for why we're down there. How did I know? Every day, and the low's from seventy-six to seventy-eight.
Like that's seventy-seven comfort zone.
I mean.
You know what to expect, there's no.
Where's it, you're going?
Ohio Department, outside Cancun.
Let's somewhere, that's just too soon.
Well, I'm going to the exact same resort. Me and my husband had to go do research. And I'm now taking my mother and my daughter and my other friends. And since I was looking at this, he said, well, maybe we need to go down and scope it out, make sure I think it's safe for you ladies to go alone.
Whatever.
Sounds small.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was, it was the responsible parenting.
It really is.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Did it direct flight from Denver?
We're going from Denver.
Oh, Denver.
And the flights from here to Dallas didn't get in in time to catch any of the Dallas to Cancun would have been overnight in Dallas. So I just seemed, drive up to Denver, spend two hundred and fifty dollars less a person and go direct from there, host it, stay the night in Dallas.
Exactly.
Now, flights would have worked out, timing wise a little better, would have been nice, so.
I just copied them. Off the presses.
Hey, guys, I have six oh one. Are we ready to start?
Oh, yeah.
Wait, I don't have anything. You guys ready? Okay, this is Marilyn Douglas, and I'm gonna go ahead and call the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees. May meeting to order, and it is six oh one PM. And so first of all, we have some agenda change. Agenda order changes. Um, we're gonna have the STA report and the faculty report right after comments from the chair. Because students are studying and teachers are grading, and they need the time to do that. Anticipating that we are going to have an executive session tonight, actually, we're gonna have two of them, so just let me know. So, first of all, I have a few comments, and then I wanted to hear from our, our board members, and the comments tonight are, are more about the celebrations that we've just attended. On graduation was last Friday night, there were two hundred and ninety-eight graduates. And I've always said that's the best day in, to be a trustee, is to be up on the stage. And having missed it last year made this year even more special. It's finally feeling like it's, it's okay to celebrate after getting through COVID. The isolation and the social distancing has made it difficult, but I'm, I'm proud of administration and their staff for pulling off a terrific graduation. I heard some good comments about having the parents being able to walk with their, their students. So instead of talking anymore, I wanted to hear from each of you about the ceremonies that you attended.
Steph, I'll let you go ahead. The best thing, I, as, as I was walked up on that stage and sat down and all of a sudden, I mean, I got a little emotional because it'd been twelve years since I've been on that stage and working, seeing it last year. But I, I thought it was really, really good. I, I had some parents talk to me, the students talked to me, and so they really, really liked the, the, the people that mattered to them coming in together. Uh, I thought all, all of the, we had a lot of togetherness the last two weeks, haven't we? With all the, uh, the, I went to the band concerts, I went to the choir concert. A concert, excuse me, I, it should have been bands concert in the park. And then the nurses, pending the DPS, Student Government Association. And it, it just, I don't know, it was just amazing, made, made, as I was talking about it later, made us feel like part of the campus because we have been so isolated because of the COVID restrictions. I was, I was really proud of, of the happenings. I think that one day I had four things and I, I gave up, I didn't blow the bonfire, I thought I was probably toasted enough. But that's the only thing I think I missed that day. And I just wanna extend our, my appreciation to the, this administration, faculty staff, particularly the students on, on all their efforts. Made me proud to be a trustee.
Similar to that, but I missed the concerts and bonfire. It was amazing to see all the involvement of the parents and friends and stuff at a lot of these ceremonies. Now, there was a couple ceremonies, it wasn't hardly anybody there, but we were there, and that's, they did okay. I think the administration and staff did a great job of helping the students put those on, so. I, you know, pretty much what's being said, said I really liked the parents walking in with the graduates. It's too bad that we weren't able to have other participants in the stands. Hopefully next year that'll be different. But I thought that was a good touch, I'd never thought of it before, but I think it just makes it more of a family environment. I enjoyed going over to the John Deere deal and got to stand around and visit some of the parents there, and some that had came up from Amarillo and Tucumcari, and let's just did, see their kids graduate. You know, I think, to me, that's what's, what I enjoy more than anything is the camaraderie and being able to visit with people and tell them, thank you for coming and finding out. Most of them are very appreciative and really admire Garden City and Garden City Community College. One, one grandmother said, well, I asked if they're gonna go visit the facility, I said, yeah, I said, well, it's really clean, and she said, well, I hope I see that before I see my grandson's room. But it, you know, those were really the only ones that I was able to get to, but I thought the graduation ceremony went, was first class, I, I just put it that way.
Yeah, I, you know, unfortunately didn't, wasn't able to make really anything but the graduation. But, you know, with, with all that's happened this year, and to have a graduation live in person, sure beats from last year where we didn't have anything and, you know, seeing the students that could walk and the, the faculty and staff all, all present and you know, it's kind of funny to watch some of the kids, they wanna race across the stage, and I think all of us kind of tried slowing them down just a little bit, enjoy the moment and, and, but you know, the, the big thing too is there's a lot of those kids that are first generation graduating. And that's pretty special, you know, to have that opportunity, and, and again, community colleges make that opportunity where, you know, those kids may not have ever thought about a four-year university, but this is the stepping stone, maybe it's something more, maybe it's not, maybe it's just into the workforce, but again, you can see it in the parents' eyes that it's, it's a pretty proud moment, so, pretty, pretty neat day.
What did the kid yell when he opened his shirt?
What did he say?
I didn't, I didn't catch.
Oh, I saw it, but now I don't remember. Nothing.
Yeah.
No, I thought it was. See what happened?
Yeah, I didn't catch it, caught me off guard, but I didn't catch what it said.
Shannon?
And, yeah, getting, getting to see the pride on the parents' faces and the students' faces at these different awards, graduation, makes reading a hundred and twenty-five pages worth it. I mean, that, that puts the human, you know, why we do this to it, so that was very rewarding. So.
Thank you, guys.
I was, I was gonna add, Leonard made me think of, when we went to the John Deere debt appreciation, it was amazing, there were four big, large dealerships there. In addition to some of the individual dealers, I thought that was very impressive that they would come. And all that they do for the school and, and our students. On this side now, how many walked? You said two hundred and ninety-eight graduated, how many actually went to the ceremony, do you know?
That was, that was what had walked.
That's what, what had walked, okay, not just.
Yeah, they'll be closer to over four hundred.
I was gonna say, I, I, that's what I was trying to figure out, is the difference in the numbers there.
Yeah.
Awesome, well, thank you, guys, I really appreciate your opinions. So moving on, I just want to remind you, we'll be filling out the self-assessments, you're welcome to jot down some comments as we go through the board meeting, and, and remember, this is just about recording any thing that you want to talk about or any issues or given an opinion on how, how we're conducting things. Um, I understand there's no introduction of employee, new employees tonight, so we're gonna move on to the STA report from Taryn Taber.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Taryn.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so I want to start off with allocations, we did that April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Clubs just made an appointment with us and then we just stayed and you know, talked about what they were doing and if they wanted any changes and what they wanted, SGA, what SGA could have done better and stuff. And it all went well. It went very smoothly through those days. And then the April thirtieth, we had the bonfire and the award ceremony. Um, time was kind of running out, so we just made it a big day. For the award ceremony, it was at five o'clock and it lasted about an hour. We had snacks and stuff for after, so there was no food in the theater room. And I think it went very well. We had a great speaker, his name was Cody, and it was a good speech, and it was, um. It went well, but not very many of the clubs showed up, so um, a lot of the SGA students are in other clubs, so they accepted those awards for the clubs. And then after, at eight o'clock, we had the bonfire, we started setting up about seven. We had yard games and we had little snacks, so it wasn't like the regular food where we had appetizers and stuff, it was just cookies or a bag of chips and Gatorade. And so we had that provided, and then we also provided a shirt, and it was just something simple, we had a white t-shirt and it said JCCC twenty twenty-one in black lettering. And the reason why we went with that was because we did chalk, it was like powdered chalk, and then we had all the students like grab some, and then we were just throwing it in the air. That way our, the white shirts had color on it, kind of like a color run. And a lot of the students enjoyed doing that. And then we had glow sticks to hand out, and everybody was decked out in their glow sticks. So overall, it was a good turnout at first. It was a little slow, but as soon as the, as soon as they turned on the bonfire, everybody started coming out. So it was a good day overall, and then, um. I talked to you guys about doing, or that we were gonna team up with the Humane Society and do a dog run. Well, they fell through twice because of short staff and COVID. And the week before, I just called them and I said, we need to do something. So, May fourth, they came out to campus and they brought five dogs and the students had an hour to come out and play with the dogs, so it was good for the Humane Society and for students to take a break during that week before graduation. And then and then the following day, May fifth, Halo came to us with the idea of Fun Day. And so different clubs were in charge of a yard game or a relay activity. So what happened was you can get a group of, I think it was four students and an advisor, and then you would go through the relay, and the relay was all day, so you can come and go. And then at the end, they announced the winner, and then through the day, there was food, music, zumba, different yard games if you weren't in a relay. And then there was also giveaways. And that was the last event of the year. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Sounds like lots of fun.
It was, it was a good end to the year, and it was good seeing everybody get out. It was good seeing everybody on campus and having fun.
Right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Any other comments for Taryn? I think you should do the dog thing again. I think that was a good idea.
Thank you, yes, I hope that they will follow up that in the fall.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thanks for your leadership, Taryn. Congrats on graduating.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, faculty report, Ms. Perla.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Hello.
I just wanted to follow up on Taryn. The Fun Day was a great way to end the event for the year. It was truly a great fun day. So hopefully we can do that again as well as bringing the puppies on campus. So let me go ahead and get started. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming to the faculty banquet. We really appreciate your time and your continued support. So thank you so much for those of you who were able to come. And for those of you who weren't, thank you for letting us know. We really, truly appreciate your time. I just have a short report before the banquet. Our last meeting was before the banquet. And really, all the agenda topics then dealt with getting the banquet set up. So there's really not much that has happened since then. And our next meeting is this week. We're actually meeting on Friday to finish up anything that is still going on this semester, just wrapping up the year, making sure that we have our new members set up for next year and then just getting ready for the end of the semester. As for faculty, as you know, we are currently giving finals and grading finals, as well as working on assessment reports for the end of the year. The course assessments are due as well as the program assessment reports are due. SLAT had a workshop where faculty could come in and ask questions if they needed it this Monday. And we will have another one next Monday. We didn't really have that many people come over. I think most faculty are getting the hang of how to do assessments. So we only had two. They had really good questions, so it was a really short workshop. But everybody had good questions that were prepared. And I think it, it sounds like everybody knows what they're doing. So we're thinking that we won't have that many faculty come on Monday, but we will have it available just in case. We've also had adjunct faculty come in during those workshops. So they are really good and I am glad that SLAT has those workshops for us. And I think that's really all I have for you guys. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do. Appreciate it. Good luck with your grading.
Yes, that's exciting. Many, many tests, but I'm, I'm looking forward to the calculus test. I think those will be fun.
That's a juicy headache.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we are on item number two, the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled? So I would say item E needs to be pulled. Any other? Can we pull the baseball lights?
Absolutely. You get it.
Also H, access control.
Well, let's not leave out G then. Auditorium seating.
Ma'am, here I move that we accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, I, J, and K. And Wilson?
I'll second. This is David.
So Beth made the motion. David seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so that was a unanimous carry. So let's go back to item E, first of all. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale lease purchase agreement certificates of participation. That's on page 43, 44, actually. And I'm gonna ask Carla to lead the discussion. And this is an item that we will take action on and we'll have to read the resolution. So go ahead.
Okay, Andrew, could you let Larry in? Hey, Larry.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hi. Oops. He's doing, he's putting the document up. Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, thanks for having me. My partner, John Haas, he's been there the past few times. He couldn't make it tonight, but glad to be here. I'm actually originally grew up in Lake and not too far away from you guys, so I need to get back out there one of these days. And I think John had talked to you maybe a month or two ago about a variety of projects to debt finance. And he, it's a long list of projects. Some of them require a notice and protest. And the notice has been published and no protesters received, so we're good to go as far as issuing the debt. We're looking at a little over 4 million, as you can see on the screen there, 4,150,000 is what we're planning to take bids on. Tonight, you have a resolution authorizing us to take bids. And then either John or I will be back here at your next meeting. I think June 8th is when we'll consider the bids and maybe approve the best bid at this, at that time. Rates have gone up just a little bit since we had the refunding COP sale about a month ago. But they're still pretty low and pretty stable. We just had a Heston, City of Heston bond sale yesterday was unrated. And the rates were slightly higher than your COP sale last month. The rates you see on the screen are pretty conservative. I expect rates to be lower than what you see here, especially considering we're planning on getting this rated. We have a ratings call with S and P on Thursday. And raised debt always brings in a lot of bidders, especially from out of state. So I think we're on a good track here. And I would expect interest rates to be lower than what we see here unless something happens in the market. But you have any questions for me or otherwise it's a resolution to proceed? And we'll be back here in a few weeks with the sale results.
Okay. Larry, is there anything that could go wrong that would, that we need to be aware of? I mean, it sounds too simple.
Come, a lot of work done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if interest rates were to skyrocket, we would probably maybe put a pause on it and we'd come back and say, hey, let's wait another month. But so far, things have been very stable. I don't think anything, I don't foresee anything happening. But if so, we'll, we'll handle it if that's the case.
All right. Trustees, do you have any other questions?
It sounds like everything's just as expected from our last conversation about this. No new big surprises. Okay. No, on the ratings call on Thursday, we just, we did a ratings call last year. So I don't know if we'll have the same underwriter, but we just update them. Of course, there are a lot of COVID questions about the financial stability of the institution because of COVID. You know, some, I'm, we're very fortunate to be enrollment-wise where we are. I would hate to be going through this with a 15% decrease in enrollment and, you know, justifying taking on additional debt with that. So I'm not, I'm not anticipating any real challenges on the ratings call. And this, this isn't my first one. I remember the first one. It was kind of intimidating, but I just handled it. So they're just asking information. They're just doing their job to evaluate our risks. And so we will do that one o'clock on Thursday, so.
All right, so trustees, to move forward, we need to, a motion to approve and I can then read the resolution.
I would approve resolution number 2021.
What's the number again?
2021B.
No, we are E. It's E. E as in elephant.
Should be on there. Should be.
That's the type of series of bombs that they're going.
Okay, whatever. Yeah, maybe we did. So I already screwed it up. Yeah. The resolution number is just our record keeping or, you know, the A is the first one and then E would be what?
Okay.
I'll second that.
The motion and the second to approve resolution number 2021- E as in elephant. Anyone wants to go ahead and read it?
You want to read?
Technically, but technically the one that makes the motion is the one supposed to read the motion.
See, she's so good. Resolution number 2021-D-E. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale or lease purchase agreement certificates of participation. Series 2021-B of Garden City Community College, Fannie County, Kansas. Be resolved by the governing body of Garden City Community College, Fannie County, Kansas as follows. Section 1, Garden City Community College, Fannie County, Kansas. The college is hereby authorized to offer a competitive public sale approximately $4,150,000, principal amount of certificates of participation. Series 2021-B, evidence proportionate interest in and rights to receive payments under a lease purchase agreement, the series 2021-B certificates, as described in the notice of sale of lease purchase agreement certificates of participation. The notice of certificate sale attached hereto as exhibit A and the preliminary official statement referenced herein. Section 2, ransom financial group LLC Wichita, Kansas. Financial advisor is hereby authorized and directed to receive bids on behalf of the college for the purchase of the series 2021-B certificates on June 8th, 2021. Upon the terms and conditions set forth in said notice or certificate sale and to deliver all bids so received to the governing body at its meeting to be held on such date at said time and place, at which meeting the governing body shall review such bids and shall approve a bid or reject all bids. Section 3, the notice of certificate sale is hereby approved in substantially the form attached hereto as exhibit A. With such changes and additions thereto as the vice president for administrative services/CFO shall deem necessary or appropriate and to use such document in connection with the public sale of the series 2021-B certificates. Section 4, the preliminary official statement is hereby approved in substantially the form presented to the governing body this date. With such changes or additions as the chairperson and vice president for administrative services/CFO shall deem necessary and appropriate and such officials and other representatives of the college are hereby authorized to use such document in connection with the public sale of the series 2021-B certificates. Section 5, the vice president for administrative services/CFO in conjunction with the financial advisor and Gilmore and Bell PC Wichita, Kansas Bond Council is hereby authorized and directed to give notice of said sale by transmitting copies of the notice of certificate sale and preliminary official statement to prospective purchasers of the series 2021-B certificates. Section 6, for the purpose of enabling the purchaser of the series 2021-B certificates, the purchaser to comply with the requirements of rule 15C2-12 of the Securities Exchange Commission, the rule. The appropriate officers of the college are hereby authorized, A, to provide the purchaser a letter or certificate or certification to the effect that the college deems the information contained in the preliminary official statement to be final as of its date, except for the admission of such information as is permitted by the rule. B, covenant to provide continuous secondary market disclosure by annually transmitting certain financial information and operating data and other information necessary to comply with the rule to certain national repositories and the municipal securities rulemaking board as applicable. And C, take such other actions or execute such other documents at such, such officers in their reasonable judgment being necessary to enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of the rule. Section 7, the college agrees to provide the purchaser within seven business days of the date of the sale of series 2021-B certificates or within sufficient time to accompany any confirmation that requests payments from any customer of the purchaser, whichever is earlier, sufficient copies of the final official statement to enable the purchaser to comply with the requirements of rule 15C2-1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Securities and Exchange Commissions and with commissions and with the requirements of rule G-32 of the municipal securities rulemaking board. Section 8, the chairperson, secretary, vice president for administrative services/CFO and the other officers and representatives of the college, the financial advisor and bond council are hereby authorized and directed to take such other action as may be necessary to kill area out the public sale of the series 2021-B certificates. Section 9, this resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its adoption.
Any other discussion?
Larry, are you good with all of that?
I am.
Okay. Let's go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept the resolution number 2021-E, please go by roll call and say aye.
Beth Tedrow, aye.
David, aye.
Leonard hits, aye.
Lightwater, aye.
Shanda Smith, aye.
Marilyn Douglas, aye. The resolution passes. Yep, that's right. Thanks for understanding all that. Okay. Back to our consent agenda items that we're looking at. The next one is item F, baseball lights.
Thanks, Larry. Sorry, Marilyn.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Page 46.
And what's the expected lifespan on these?
So the lifespan on these, it actually has a 10-year warranty that comes with there. The lifespan of these areas, 25, 30 years on the light poles themselves. But the base and the poles themselves come with a 10-year warranty from the company.
So how do we avoid this age-related deterioration happening so quick if 25 is more kind of the expected lifespan?
Yeah, but.
So the technology, it won't be a concrete base out of the ground. It'll actually be underground. So right now, in the eighties, what they did, they had concrete bases. And the water infiltrated the concrete base and that's when you started getting the deterioration. So the new technology actually buries the concrete base of this pole into the ground. So they should last actually a little bit longer. I mean, we got 30 years out of these pole bases, which is phenomenal. But these next ones, I hope, last about 50. I'm hoping until I'm long gone. That's the plan anyway.
Derek, hey, Derek, talk to, I mean, part of the changes that have happened there with city codes, they're required a significant amount more of infrastructure, concrete, steel that goes into the bases there as well.
Correct. You have to go down a significant depth also. And so we were gonna have to add slurry and that's what, you know, the, the price increased. Like, we got a, a bid in April of 2018 and it was, I believe, like 10,000 to 12,000. And then we held off on the project and then we went back after the city codes had changed during the summer, went back when, I think it was September, and it had gone up to 50,000 to 75,000 just by the adjusting to these new building codes.
So what, it, and it says that there were materials the contractor had purchased that can be utilized. What became of those materials?
We still.
Yeah, we, we still have them and we're just kind of looking for a project to use them on. So it was about $5,000, I believe, worth of material that we just kind of had to eat. We had to eat. Yeah. It wasn't too significant.
Do we know the savings from the LEDs to what we have now? It stands on electricity?
It'll be, it'll be a tremendous savings and what we're trying to do is. It'll be, it'll be a tremendous savings and what we're trying to do is moving forward into the future is looking at energy savings. We're right now kind of handicapped because the college has just like three or four main meters. So like, you know, Williams stadiums is tied to DPAC, which is also tied to fine arts. So it's kind of hard to see the energy savings in certain areas. However, I do. Expect to see a significant energy savings by having those LED lighting. And we'll be able to tell by our energy and utility bills.
Think the other thing there that you see there, particularly with that being in the residential neighborhood. The way the lights are right now, there's not a way to position those to where. You have what's called light pollution that's going into the, into the residential housing, into the residential neighborhoods. Whereas these whole structures there, you'll be able to add light directly specifically onto the field, have a lot. Less light pollution that's going into the residential neighborhood as well.
When we first got those, I remember Gary Williams talking about. It was coming in the first night that they had them on. He was coming in way out east and he couldn't believe the brightness that was coming off of those lights. And I guess he was kind of proud of that, but it was extremely bright when they first turned them on.
And that was a problem with the residential area too, that that.
Correct.
Will we still be able to host some of those summer fleet things like the Clayton tournament and stuff?
Not for this summer, there's, it's a six to eight week window from when the contract is signed, so we're bumping up right next to the start of the fall. Chris, in talking to Coach Finnegan there, he had one. Tournament that was supposed to be hosted here at the end of July, but they found other arrangements there for you can still host it, but this won't be at the Williams Stadium.
Derek, can you also talk about the disposal of the old poles?
Yep, we're actually talking to Mammoth right now and seeing if they can put a proposal together to haul off the old poles free of charge. However, if they come back with their proposal and it's significant, then we will be able to do that in-house. And as you guys remember, that pole that we had taken down had sat there for a while because we had hoped to put it, put it back up, but when we got the. That price increase from when the building coach changed, we decided we didn't want to go that direction. So what we did was we got some welding torches and we cut it up into several different pieces and hauled it off and received some money from that steel, so. Hopefully with the prices still the way it is right now, we'll get a significant kickback off of scrapping those poles. And then we'll, we'll go ahead and utilize the fixtures and I might even reach out to the rec. Or the school district to see if they may be able to utilize those fixtures. But they're, they're old lighting, so not really too many people are gonna, are gonna want those.
I would also just as we're talking on this here then as well, draw the attention of your seats, we did. As part of this. If asked for local financial institutions to provide. Five year and seven year scenarios there as far as the financing. We've had. We have four local institutions. As you can see on the first sheet. Clayton Holdings Commerce, First National Bank, Syracuse County Bank. Also have separate one there that's at your desk with American State. And then government flex capital as the leasing. Corporation. That the contractor works with there as well and have their, their rates that are included. But as you can see from, from the list in front of you there, Clayton Holdings Commerce locally there have the. Lowest five year rate came in there to us.
Do you plan on going to throw five years or have them paid off before?
Our intent, I mean, as Carlin and I talked to our intent, there is be able to pay that off sooner and so as we've gone through. The process with each of the financial institutions, we've asked that. We've asked whether there's penalty for early payment prepayment, there is not. On this there, so our intent is to be able to pay it off prior to the five year, but we want to be able to have a five year. Flexibility for any unproceeding circumstances may make them.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think I answered all the questions I had.
There is something I would like to add. By using this consortium, Green Bush, it was, it was tremendous, we had gone to got pricing about three years ago and it was just preliminary, we'd had to done an RFP. And gone out for bids. But I went and did a preliminary bid and we got one from Techline Lighting. And it was for, I think it was about four eighteen. And for Green Bush to come in three years later or a couple of years later and be around that same pricing with. The prices still increasing and all of materials increasing was pretty amazing. So I think by using that consortium, it saved us a lot of money.
Alright, so can you explain what you mean by using the consortium?
It's the higher ed purchasing co-op. So they kind of guarantee us the lowest price possible by gathering different vendors together. And then they guarantee the lowest prices by being a part of that consortium.
So it's, they, it's a, the product has already been solicited. And when they do that, they include in their solicitation the ability for. Any public. Schools they identify to pig back on the agreement, so it saves us time, money. We did have, you know, we have some other. I probably often buy our cars through state contracts, you know, vehicles.
Well, the reason we use them this time is because there's really no local vendor that could do this level of work. Going out, normally we would, you know, we have preference to local vendors, but since there's no local vendors that could do this, we, we decided to go to the consortium.
Guys, settled? Yeah, okay. I would entertain a motion for.
And. You, no, after, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Some motion in a second to approve item F.
Just for clarification on the wording there, then to include. Financing as far as the financing. Just to prove it as presented.
In the five year.
In the five year.
I'll motion, I'll, let me amend my motion to approve item F. Including recommended board action financing with Clayton Holdings. On the five year.
So we have this motion amended. The second still stands?
I second the amendment. I also second the motion.
amended motion in a second, any other discussion? Okay, we'll also do a roll call vote, Beth Tedrow, aye.
David Robb, aye.
Leonard Hitz, aye.
Like Walter, aye.
Shanda Smith, aye.
Marilyn Douglas, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, good questions. Alright, item G, auditorium C. Page fifty-nine. Your questions?
We're gonna have the same amount of seating, aren't we?
It'll be the exact same amount of seating, yes.
Correct.
I like this, it says they're designed not only for comfort, but withstand heavy commercial use, that's. Don't have all their kind of top some wear and tear over the years.
How serviceable are these seats? If a kid stands on it breaks the seat, I mean, is it easy enough to get replacement components and parts to. Maintain damage along the way?
Yeah, and we, in the quote we got, it does include replacement parts. And we also ordered additional, I think, eight seats, so if we have to. And we shouldn't have to replace them for a while, but if we do, then we have the necessary items to replace them. And, and we were actually lucky enough to sit in a sample seating and they're very comfortable and, you know, and I'm, I'm six foot five, so I like a tall back and it helped a lot, so they are very comfortable.
But they're stationary, they don't rock like in the theater?
They, they maybe rock a little bit, but not much.
I mean, they're fastened and secured in the same manner as the seating.
Yeah.
Again, the financing is through the certificate of participation that we just talked about.
I was pleased with that amount, I thought it would be a lot higher.
Yeah, I think, you know, the one point there as well, you'll notice in the background description. There was a higher ed consortium cooperative that we worked with there as well. Lakon School District is actually working with the same cooperative, so it actually was K-12 there also, but. Very competitive and with there being no local vendor. Mid States has actually out of Kansas City who would be. Working through this consortium, there with this project.
Have we put new carpet in?
We will be, we'll coincide carpet, we'll also coincide page. Along with the installation of the chairs.
Who's taking the mound? The seats in there now? I don't see that in a bid, of course.
Who's taking?
Two hundred and ninety-eight. In the seats.
Removing the seats from auditorium.
They are as a part of this bid.
Are they taking care of disposal of everything on this?
Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, I make motion when we accept Mid States school equipment. Is. We replace one of the auditorium seats.
I second that.
Do a motion in a second to approve this bid for the auditorium seating, item G. Any other discussion? So again, roll call vote. Beth Tedrow, aye.
David Robb.
Leonard Hitz, aye.
Like Walter, aye.
Shanda Smith, aye.
Marilyn Douglas, aye. Thank you unanimously. One more item. Item H. On page sixty-four. Derek, I'll let you go ahead and give an overview.
Okay, this is access control phase two, so phase one, as you guys approved last fall. Began phase one and we went through and added these access control. Panels each door and so far they've been great. Then working, you know, we're working through the bugs and everything like that and this will finish out all exterior doors around campus. So if there was a, an event on campus, an emergency situation, we had the ability to lock down immediately with the touch of a button. Before, so with the exterior doors, we had to keep some of them locked during the days. And this will allow us to unlock entire campus and then lock it up at certain times, so you can set. Certain points in time, so if you want campus open at seven, you can have it a timer, you don't have to actually push a button, you can just put a timer and alarm on there. So they, campus opens at seven and then the doors lock at five. And so, and then you guys will have your readers and your cell phones or fobs or whatever you guys might have. So I'm really excited about this product, we like the software right now and it's going to be integrating into our camera system. So we have eyes on who's entering and coming and going up our campus.
What bugs would you say you're working through and would see on phase two?
So some of the bugs we're working for is some of our hardware that we have located in the doors, that's really, really old, so just getting this new software and this new hardware to. To be compatible with our older doors, you know, opening and closing. Trying to get security and maintenance and facilities, oops. On the same page as far as how to, like, we have a command center where the IT and security, it shows us what doors are showing alarms. So who goes and answers those doors, you know, how to fix a door if it, if it's, the alarm's not going off and just. Minor bugs like that that we're trying, we worked through it through the spring and then getting faculty and staff to understand how to use. Their readers and how to access the doors and stuff like that, so. This summer we're hoping to integrate this phase two and then by the fall, we'll go full hard open. Where the students and everyone, faculty and staff will have this as their main entry points and then we'll start collecting. All exterior keys from faculty and staff.
Derek, attending these ceremonies over the last couple of weeks. I've had people come up and say there's been problems with this access control and it doesn't seem like anybody's listening to get this problem fixed. Such as one, one of them said a. Door reader possibly beeps. Which is supposed to recommend that it's unlocked, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
That the phones were. Timing out before they got. Reader to read it, things like that, so in this access program number two. Is there anything in there for. Them coming out to address some of the maintenance problems?
Yep, and I think, you know, the more we do this, the better we're getting at it, so we're, we're learning from their tech when he comes out to teach us. How to install their hardware into our hardware. And another, I think the biggest problem was the two factor identification. So when I mean two factor, it means something you are and something you know. So with your cell phone, take for example, it's something you are, is your thumbprint or a face scan. Well, what is everybody wearing in the room? They're wearing a mask, so that created a lot of issues because then people had to pull their mask down. And then unlock their phone, then they'd have to put it up to the reader and then they, it just created a bunch of issues. So I think going forward with the, the mask, you know, getting, having, not having a mask mandate is going to help. But then allowing people to understand the second part of the two factors, something you know, so like. It's your passcode or, or accessing the, the app itself. So hopefully, you know, learning as we go, learning how, you know, the installation of the doors and, and everyone making sure that when they go through a door, they close it shut, because if it doesn't close. That's when you get that beeping sound, because the door is open, so it's alerting you that that door is ajar. So hopefully that will help and just educating people, so we're gonna have. Weekly trainings for each building when they get back, just to, you know, if they have any issues and questions. That will be there to answer them and help them through it.
No, I think it's just like with any, with any new computer software, I mean, there's going to be things that they can find out along the way, but. You know, part of, I mean, and similar to what Derek said, it's going through and being able to have some of those. Conversations building by building, you know, what's working, what's not working, how is it going to troubleshoot some of this? You know, they've gone through, through phase one, they've gone through by building and had. Had training sessions and, and we need to continue to do some of those listening sessions as we go forward. To address some of the same things you're talking about, what's, what's not working or other things that are unique to this building that we need to address and be able to work through with the vendor on those items.
And ultimately, I mean, right now, we're in probably the most secure the campus has ever been. If something were to happen, I would be able to secure the campus in an instant and we've never had that capability. Before, to kind of give you guys an idea of how, what we were doing is Rodney had an emergency building response team. Where he has a walkie talkie and he'd have sent out a message to all the building leaders. And then each building leader would have to get their keys and go to each exterior door to lock it. And so that takes time and you lose precious, precious seconds, minutes. Off of your response time, whereas now Rodney can just push a button and the campus locks down. So.
Derek, in this three year maintenance board agreement. Provide inspections, preventive maintenance, hardware cleaning, fire, firmware update and corrective repair. Per failing, is there anything hidden in there?
for failing components, or anything hidden in there that may spring up to be a cost? Let's say there's something in there that's a failing component. They pay it or do we pay it?
No, they it's a part of the agreement, so right now they've been great, they've been coming out when we called them. One of my concerns with going with this vendor was that they are located in Kansas City and that was kind of one of the pros and cons to them when we first initially brought them to you guys. However, they've been very, very responsive, we call them, they're out here within a day or two. And then if if we had an emergency situation, they answered the calls immediately and walked us through over the phone or FaceTime and stuff like that, so they've been great. Yeah, Kenton Brothers out of Kansas City is who's installing the Gallagher system and they've been great.
Is there anything we can put at the doors where instructor or somebody coming in has their hands full can set their items on since they have to get their phone out?
Uh, yeah, we can do that, I mean, we can do something, you know, we can.
That was another problem, you know.
I can just speak to that, I mean, I always have lots that I'm carrying in, so you just have to modify your own behavior. I, when I get out of my car, I swipe up, I open up the app, I put it in the side of my purse, and when I get to the door reader, I just hope, I just I don't have to move my phone, it's inside my leather bag and it opens, so you know, yeah, we can do some of those things, but again, you know, it's just kind of like figuring out what works.
So for example, if he, if Dr. Ruda opened it up, put it in his jacket pocket, he doesn't have to actually physically pull it out of his pocket to do anything.
What would be more worse if they had to dig a key out and do it?
True, yeah.
So just be thankful for new improvements.
Yeah, and maintenance guys are loving this because they don't have to carry these huge things, the keys around anymore, or cycle through the key, which key opens this door, which key opens that?
Find it in the bottom of a purse or.
Right. Yeah, and so, you know, it's taken me, I mean, we all, you know, figure things out, but I was interested to see if it would reach through, you know, the outside pocket and it does and it makes it a lot easier than, you know, digging out your keys and.
Oh, like your key fob on your cars.
Right.
Instead of actually having to put the key in the ignition and just have it with you and that, yep, so.
Now, is the on-call person able to do this remotely?
Yes.
Say if you have a weekend class or something, the door isn't unlocked and.
Yeah, and so what we're trying to get to is where the building secretaries, you know, the more we communicate, the more we can set schedules in advance, so if like, let's say DPS or somebody like that has a evening or a weekend class, we can set like, hey, the doors, the class starts at five on Saturday night. The doors will unlock at four thirty and then they expect to be done by nine o'clock on Saturday night, we can have the doors locked right at nine.
But the on-call, the on-call will have access to be able to do that though as well.
Yes. Yeah, and mainly it'll be, you know, we'll have certain people in charge of the command centers and they'll probably get the phone call from on-call. We won't have everyone that's on-call have that access.
As we transition to a twenty-four seven police security staff there, then they would have that same access as well.
Yep.
Derek, is this system operational if there's no electricity?
Yeah, it's, if the power goes out, that we do lose, it's got batteries, but they don't last for so long, so only for a certain amount of time, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Unlocked.
Okay.
Correct, it unlocks once the battery's out?
Yeah, but we'll we'll be able to still access through our keys if we have to, maintenance will have that capability.
Sure. I think it's a it's a great opportunity to improve the safety of the campus, so. Any other comments, questions? So I would entertain a motion to approve item H.
I'm going to approve item H, you said, yeah.
I second that.
So a motion in a second to approve item H is presented, any other discussion? All those in favor, let's do roll call.
Yeah.
Beth, Darrow, I.
David Rappah.
Leonard Getz, I.
Like Washington, I.
Candace Smith, I. Marilyn Douglas, I. All right, guys, thank you. Let's take this through all of the items of agenda number two. Round item number three, confirmation of monitoring reports. Starting on page one fifteen. The Dr. Ruda has provided information on answering or how he interprets this executive limitation on treatment people. With respect to treatment of students, employees, volunteers in the community, dealings shall not be inhumane, inhumane, unfair or undignified. And so I will let you peruse through those answers. If you have any comments, please feel free to speak up. I'm going to go ahead and continue with treatment people, number one, the president shall not operate without procedures which clarify student and staff rules, provide for effective handling of grievances and complaints and protect against wrongful conditions. You'll notice at the bottom of the President Ruda's explanation that there's been no formal grievances submitted throughout the respective areas in this past academic year.
Does that also go for the first one, treatment people?
Correct.
Yes. Number two says the president shall not discriminate against anyone for expressing their opinion. And again, there's been no reported concerns. Number three, the president shall not withhold a complaint, grievance or appeal procedure from faculty, staff or students. And then number four, the president shall not fail to acquaint students and staff with their rights and responsibilities. So in all of his explanations, Dr. Ruda referred to the policies and procedures and the orientation process that that gets everyone up to speed on these. This monitoring for the rules and policies and how anyone would proceed with the grievance if they needed to. And I might comment that this past year has been really challenging, they've included all of the COVID training, of course. Dr. Ruda's explanation describes a significant advancement in employee training and compliance programming. An online training platform called Safe Colleges to focus on campus safety, compliance and knowledge of policies on an annual basis. And he lists the specific policies there, including discrimination awareness, sexual harassment, staff to staff Title IX roles of the responsible employees, bloodborne pathogens, exposure prevention. And this is also part of employee orientation process. So I think it reflects Dr. Ruda's emphasis and importance on having policies and procedures in place and presenting the information so that people are very well aware of it.
Uh, I'd like to highlight something that's there, page, we just skimmed over it, but on page one fifty, at the the very end of the the data directly addressing CEOs interpretation, it says, this year, the college has also initiated a diversity, equity and inclusion committee that consists of faculty, staff and students working collaboratively to address initiatives focused on the aspects of diversity, equity and inclusion to enhance improved systems for fair and dignified treatment of others on the campus. I I I like that very much, the fact that the college did that. And it's there to protect our students and faculty staff. Anyone that's on the campus, so I like that inclusion very much.
Any other comments? I appreciate that, Doug, because that's the, I mean, something that we wanted this year.
And I think that's one of the things definitely that will be considered as we go through our accreditation process.
All right, hearing no other comments, I propose that we accept these as presented. We we opposition. Okay, item B, we don't have any policy governance to review tonight, which is a nice little break. So we are in item four, other. Is there any public comments? There are no public comments, so we're on card B, the president's report.
Yeah, thank you, have several points of emphasis. First of all, you've probably heard of, and there's been some conversations about the Kansas Promise Scholarship Act that was passed by and signed into law by Governor Kelly this past spring. This is a last dollar scholarship that will go towards some specific tech ad programs. So we're working right now with more regions in the state to be able to finalize the programs that will be eligible, the intent is for this program to start in the fall of twenty-one. And essentially with it being a last dollar in scholarship, what it'll what it'll do is be able to, after any outside or institutional scholarships have been applied, as well as federal aid, anything remaining on the student's bill from tuition fees, supplies, books, any other charges, then that will be covered by the state of Kansas here on these on these specific programs that are qualified. So again, we're going through right now, but the the intent of this there and really the other side is that this is a, this is a bill that's intent for being able to get students into these tech programs that are high wage, high demand. The the side of the point there that has to be verified with the student as a part of this scholarship is that they would commit to living in Kansas and working in Kansas for two years following as a part of accepting this scholarship, so again, we're working through finalizing a lot of the details on this as far as implementation and hope to be able to have some formal marketing that will go forth here very soon. Criminal justice competition team not competed in a virtual regional competition just this past month, finished with five first place finishes, one second place finish, two third place finish, so congrats to those students and Brandy and Gary as well. College this past week initiated a campaign of, we'll transition to a mass appreciated model starting on May seventeenth to coincide with the start of our summer session. Mass appreciated campaign still supports those of which to wear masks for the comfort and safety of themselves and others. We will still have some classrooms there because of health reasons or based upon the needs of employees or students where masks may be required. So we ask that the students and employees don't bring the masks here for those classrooms or offices based on that. And then we'll reevaluate the mask policy for the fall semester, so the decision for mass appreciated is only in place right now for the summer and then we'll evaluate it as we get closer to fall. Kind of follow things from Penny County Health Department and the Kansas Department of Health as well on the duty criteria.
What date is that?
It'll start this coming Monday, May seventeen. Very excited to announce that for the first time in program history, our Garden City Community College eSports program as a student from our men's soccer program that is also a part of eSports that won the national championship in FIFA, FIFA is the online eSports soccer game. And so Les Green is two thousand twenty-one national champion in FIFA, so very proud of Les and and the work of our coaches, Dave and and all of them that that helped to be able to train our students to get to that point and exciting things to come from eSports. Taryn had mentioned Fun Day, so won't focus much more on that other than it was great to be able to start seeing some activities and some things going on out on campus and a lot was full with a lot of fun activities and events and and just students and and employees being able to enjoy being outside and having a little bit of things getting back to normal for change. A couple of last points, want to congratulate our Phi Theta Kappa chapter who received the compassion award at the SGA Student Awards Ceremony. But they had also submitted two entries into the regional competition and their great idea award won first place at the regional competition. The great idea award, their what they presented was to be able to have a time capsule that would be buried on campus. This past week, they did bury a time capsule that had over a hundred and fifteen items that were collected from all different departments, student organizations, facets across campus. And this time capsule will be brought back up and we did, we did put a marker out there so we know what we need to dig out. Time capsule will be brought back up in twenty forty-four when the college turns a hundred and twenty-five years old. And then just the last point of of reference, just wanted to thank the board members, administration, employees and students for just a great show, supported all the events, the activities culminated in the commencement ceremony and just a reminder that we will have the commencement ceremonies that will actually come with all speeches and everything in its entirety this Saturday at two P on our Buster YouTube channel, so be looking for that there that will be able to highlight again just accomplishments of this year with our students.
Awesome, thank you. Questions, comments? Incidental information is provided in our packet, any questions? Report from Penny County Economic Development.
We had our annual meeting last week. It's hard to keep track of all the meetings. So pretty well attended by our partners, the county, city, welcome us. And just kind of briefly went over some of the projects that's been out there and one thing that was brought up was the unemployment rate is so low that there's a job for everybody out there if they want to get a job. We're actually, what'd you say, like point oh four percent of the person as the unemployment rate. And also there I heard comments from several members that they were appreciative of this board and college starting to work on the infrastructure upgrades. That was sadly missed over the past few years, I guess. We were glad to see you there.
All right, thank you, any questions for Dave or anything that you want him to take back? My report from K C C T.
Uh, we don't have a meeting scheduled for President Ruda and I worked on the evaluation of the executive director along with the other colleges, I've not heard anything back on that, but I tell you what, she does a great job in in keeping us informed. She will go to committee meetings to represent the community colleges and does well, there are so many times that we could have been blindsided by some other boards To represent community colleges and does well, there are so many times that we could have been blindsided by some other boards. And she's there to explain things to them. So she, she does a great job.
Now she was over the brat.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Did you say the president's?
So we'll be, yeah, we'll be hosting the president's council of presidents here in June, and then we're actually hosting the. Presidents and athletic directors in July as well.
Is that anything we need us to attend?
Yeah, I'll probably, we'll have a reception there on, in the evening there for the president, so we'll be sending you out an invite there.
Okay. You have a day? June what?
June what?
June third.
Third, yes.
June third.
That's Thursday night?
All right, on to ownership linkage. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? Leonard, did you want to talk about your resolution from last meeting?
No, not really, I've. I think this is a time to just back off for a while, I know. Quite, I don't know, if, if we were to vote on it, I don't know that it would pass. That's, mother, doesn't upset me, I think that the day's coming, we're going to have to deal with something in this issue. But I don't know that today or to now, right now is the time to do it, and to me, it's a moral question and. That's going to vary from, for everybody here, and I don't have the answer for it. So right now, I think best to just kind of let it play and. As time goes along, be something come up or will happen. And we'll decide that we need to maybe come up with a resolution and, and not, right now, I don't know that we really need to have it. So, you know, the governor vetoed, didn't pass her veto, so. That kind of tells me what the groundwork is up there and what feeling is, so. Right now, I think, in my opinion, just to let it lay for a while. Now, if I really feel pressed on something, I can always bring it back up.
Right, so we're okay with tabling it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other items that? Trustees want to bring up for ownership linkage? So guess what, I have a couple. And these are some ideas I wanted to run across you. I've always felt like we could improve on our lease ownership linkage, and as I was. Talking to President Root about that, we came up with some suggestions for you to think about, the first one is. That the college does link with. Our business partners when they meet, when advisory committees in each of the. Curriculums, agriculture, beef, nursing, what have you, they meet usually once a semester. And so I entertain the thought of one board member attending those advisory council meetings. To bring back to the board. Some of the thoughts and ideas that the business people are having.
I am on the videos. Attend those meetings.
How do you guys feel about that?
Be okay with that.
My thought was that, let you think about it, bring it back to the next meeting with the list of the advisory councils and you guys can pick. Which one you'd like to attend, and like I said, it's just, it's once a semester. So that's one avenue for linkage, the second one that we came up with was. That the college sponsors one of the chamber breakfasts. Coming up and that board members could attend that and we could. Talk about the college, of course, and then ask if there's any. Anything that they would like the college to, to look at or reach out to, and the third. Item was to host a breakfast and invite. People from the community. To just come and do a, a table discussion about what they would like to see the college do. And I thought maybe we could do that later this fall, like October or something.
Point Maryland, Chamber also has Thursday, they do usually late night after hours. Where it's a little bit more, kind of like that with a breakfast, but it would be like, I mean, that would be a possibility too. I think those are usually well attended and, and has a nice opportunity for businesses to come on campus. Or individuals part of the chamber.
Do they come?
Yeah, you hosted at your, you know, business, place of business or whatnot, so I mean, they would come and, you know, if we had something, I mean, they. Much like the breakfast, but it's through the chamber too, so.
Know what they call business after hours?
Yeah, it's business after hours. So I think they're usually held on Thursday nights, correct?
I like to go to the chamber breakfast, it's the problem of reminding, and Julia has taken it upon herself to remind me of those and so. And I appreciate it because I do like to go when I do, I space things like that, but now when it comes once a month, I.
Well, I think that'd be the good thing about doing a chamber breakfast and the after hours, is you probably have different people based on work schedule. That we would be interacting with instead of doing the chamber breakfast and our own breakfast.
I like the idea of having a breakfast or something and, and asking the community to come in, I remember. Bryce Rodrick and Dennis Drennan talking and Bryce would constantly say, Dennis, people don't care, they really don't care. I think that's a way we need to get in and give them to care, let it give them something to care about. I don't believe that, I don't agree with that statement, but there was that feeling. So I, I like your idea of a breakfast.
Okay. Well, we're going to further develop that, and then one last opportunity that I thought of was. A cultural holiday, attending. Events based on cultural holidays, I don't know how that would work, but we'll see if we can investigate it and come up with something.
And I think more and more the community will start those back, like the tech festival, like, and because I, I had always attended those and. The co-press and the, and. I think they will start those again.
Maybe there ought to be more of an effort to get to the very, the different businesses to remind them, I, I think there are a lot of businesses that have. People there, but they don't really encourage them to.
Right.
To get out and get to something like that.
Anybody have any other ideas to throw out there? Well, if you can get something, bring it up. Okay, we have a few. Dates on our calendar, so the first one I would remind you is the, what. President Ritter, I talked about June thirtieth, the president's meeting will be here to attend. There's a legislative coffee on Saturday in the endowment room.
Time is that?
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock. It's usually about an hour, hour and a half. The football game on Saturday is in the evening, six P M.
Oh, enough wind up.
No, just in soccer. Coffee.
Soccer, okay.
Coffee bill.
Got one lying down.
And the other dates listed there for your reference.
Now can we attend the all employee meetings?
Meet over in the gym, the back gym. And that'll start at eleven thirty. And so we're going to do. Yeah. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have the meeting in, in the gym starting at eleven thirty. And then from there, we'll dismiss and we'll be sure to launch at the endowment room, so just wait then. Coming and getting their lunch and then we can go out and claw, we can move back to. The building's going to need together, and there's going to be an open, open scene there, they're going to be down the road, nearby to, to get lunch there.
You have those monthly, I went to some one time, I don't remember what it was, but it was over in the Fine Arts Auditorium.
All do, we host for the, for this past year, we've had, I have monthly all employee meeting, we've been hosting it by June. Starting in the fall, there, we'll bring it back to any person.
I forget about the virus. It stops a lot of things that we used to do.
Still continue, I'm just in a different format.
Yeah, well, when you quit doing it in the other format, let me know, because I enjoy going to that.
Sure.
And then reminder, June nineteenth. We have our, our board retreat. To talk about our board self-assessment. And reminding you, the board self-assessment will be sent to you via email from Colleen Allen. From A C C T and should be arriving somewhere around June first. And you'll have a couple of weeks to complete it and submit it back to her. And then at our retreat is when we're going to review the results with. Ms. Ann Fisher. So June nineteen, eight thirty to one is what we're planning with breakfast in the morning. And then the second date to put out is your June twenty ninth, the budget board retreat, that's a Tuesday evening. Six to nine, is that what we decided, yeah, six to nine with dinner. Oh, dinner at five thirty, excuse me.
Where's the retreat going to be on the nineteenth?
The nineteenth retreat. Endowment, yeah. And the twenty ninth here. In the conference room. All right, that is it for any other upcoming dates, unless you guys have something. We have two executive sessions to finish up with. So we'll start with.
Here, I move. Board recess into executive session to discuss confidential employee information per son to the open meetings, exception. For the personal, first, for personnel matters of non-elected personnel with. If discussed in open meetings, might violate their rights to privacy and our vice president. Of administrative services C F O to be included, the open, we resume here in the president's conference room in. Twenty minutes, twenty minutes.
A second down.
We have a motion in a second to go into our first executive session, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Unanimous, so let's see.
Fifty one.
Okay, so seven fifty one, we'll move it down. Karen, do you want me to come now or?
Yes, please.
Ah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. We are back in session temporarily. We did not complete our business yet, so I would entertain a motion to extend the first executive or go back into executive session for another.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session for additional 10 minutes for the same process, the same reason as previous executive session, only to extend for 10 minutes.
10 minutes or not?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright. I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to return to executive session for 10 minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So unanimously carried. I know.
So you'll be having a eight over.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark. Are we doing any?
HLC.
HLC stuff.
We've spoken about it because. With the being commencement and finals week, we're gonna pause until. Two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are back in session and just wanted to know you're announced, no action was taken in those executive sessions. Board members, please fill out your self-assessment before you leave. Board members, please fill out your self-assessment before you leave. And I'd say that we are adjourning our meeting, any other. Substance before we go. I call this meeting adjourned, thank you.